I'd like to call the Dover's Lake Board Meeting to order at six thirty PM on Tuesday, September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four. First, public comments. I see none.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Um, just, I'm just following up on the municipal energy resilience program. And that's a recommendation that unfortunately didn't make it in time to get on the agenda, but um. They are now offering the implementation grant funding through that program. And so Dover can apply for up to five hundred thousand dollars for energy upgrades to the town hall and library. Because we had those energy audits done for those two buildings. So basically, um, even though Dover is considered a moderate priority, there are other towns that are, they're a higher priority. Uh, we can still apply. Unfortunately, the application is due September twenty-seventh. Um, so I guess I'm just looking for, I don't really need anything in writing approval, but just your. On scent to blessing to for me to go forward with applying and completing applications. And then the award notices will be released, um, October twenty-fifth.
Wow.
And then we're supposed to execute a grant agreement if we are awarded anything, um, by November twenty-ninth. It doesn't have to be done until twenty twenty-six.
So, Joe is probably describing right now. Okay, so. I, I don't see any reason why we shouldn't do it.
Right, yes, yeah, actually, there's like fifty-one million dollars available in this program, so.
So, um, do you want any assistance with that, or is it a one-minute operation thing?
I'm actually gonna meet, have a Zoom tomorrow with, um, one of the gals from Wind and Regional. Who's gonna walk me through the process. It's, it was like, you know, forty-page document, so.
Uh, I think all of us are in saying.
Thank you very much for doing that.
Grateful. Right, okay.
Well, if I can help you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Sarah.
Uh, just a reminder that the Wine and Harvest Festival is this weekend. Soup stroll downtown in Wilmington, and the festival is at Mount Snow on Saturday. And the, uh, Summer Wildlife Event is on Sunday at Mount Snow as well.
And that's free.
And that's free.
And you can always leave a donation.
Yes.
So, and they still are probably looking for volunteers.
I'm quite sure they are.
Good. All right, we'll go to unfinished, finished business. Consider recommendations from the Water Task Force, for the Water Task Force members. Patrick. We would love you to sit here.
Come closer.
Okay, um, after the last, uh, after, or after the request of the select board meeting, the planning commission met at its last meeting on the ninth. Um, we considered the self-nomination questionnaires that we had received from ten, uh, for the, uh, for the municipal water task force. One was withdrawn, uh, that was Jack Conway who withdrew his, and so he actually participated in deliberations along with, uh, Michelle Pinkham, uh, Dana Rickabona, Sue Reese, and me. Um, and, uh, we then reviewed the other nine questionnaires and voted to recommend a composition of the task force as follows. And I'll just go through the names and, and then address any questions. Um, Alan Block, Randy Capitani, uh, Dan Tomke, Sarah Shippey, Richard Werner, Ken Wesby, and me. Uh, would serve, uh, as members of the task force to begin, that's seven members, and then we also, uh, re- included in the recommendation. Uh, Peter McDonald and Diane McCormick as alternates. Their thinking on the alternates is this is gonna be a long, a long process, and it will be good to have a couple of other people who are, um, familiar with all the issues we're gonna be working through. And, and there may be moments, for example, where we have conflicts, where people accuse themselves from discussions or whatever. So it just made sense to us to have two alternates in addition to the seven. So that's the recommendation. Um, we try to balance east over west over different perspectives, the perspective of business people, uh, North Branch Fire District, Mount Snow, things like that. So that's how we came up with that. So there's the recommendation.
Comments?
Thank you.
Yeah, appreciate you guys going through that, from all of you.
I think we need a resolution from the slide board.
Yeah.
Want to make any point?
Can I make a comment?
Yes, you may, Joe.
So, Patrick, I think that's a great, uh, start with the amount of people. What I'd really like is also representation from Mount Snow. Is there anyone that's representing Mount Snow on that task force?
Yeah, Dan, Dan Tomke was specifically, uh, uh, the designated Mount Snow.
What does Dan Tomke, what does he do or whatever?
He's, he's, if you wait for a second, I have an email that I can look in his title.
Thanks.
I should know that. Thank you, Director of Resort Operations. He was the person that Mount Snow has had introduced to this process at the time of the initial discussion. And they've asked him to continue in that, in that capacity.
So, he, he must, I don't know the name, so he must be new.
He's, he's on Bytown.
He's on housing.
Yeah.
He sits on the chamber board.
He's on the chamber board.
And he is a Dover resident also, so.
The, the other nice thing to have, that as you guys are going through this, it would be good to have communications with the larger condo associations to see what their take is on it, type thing. So, if you were to get together and say there's twelve condo associations, each condo association should have someone from their board or representation from their, uh, property management that stays in the loop on what we're talking about.
Yeah, I think, I, I, I agree with that. I think communication with the large condo associations, given the volume of connections that would come. And if we have to, if we decide to proceed with this, we'll have, um, have to spread the cost around quite a bit, so I think that makes a lot of sense.
So that's my only kind of comments on it. I do appreciate, Patrick, that you're taking the lead on this, and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions about the board recommend, the planning commission's recommendation? Yes, Linda.
Um, did you say Rich Warner was on that?
Yes.
Okay, because he, he has several of the condo projects as far as property management.
Yeah.
He fills several of the.
He wears a lot of hats in this particular situation.
We wanted a, a, a fire department representative. Anything else?
The other thing too with the homos association, it would be great to have someone, you know, to maybe go into their meetings and say, this is what we're looking to do. It could be costing you guys the money and also the town some money and see what their feel is of it at an association meeting, so they know what's kind of going on and stuff like that. They all have their board meetings, you know, usually this time of year, to December, just kind of some ideas. So again, like we talked, Patrick, it's about education.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, Joe, do you have any other questions right now?
Nope, I should be there in about another five minutes, hopefully. Just drove by the town hall, I gotta drop a trailer off.
Okay, so, um, Sarah will be recusing herself from this vote. And I want to ask if there's anybody who has concerns, because my husband has been recommended to be on this, this task force.
Yeah, I mean, probably you see what I. It's good.
I don't feel that you're having a problem with impartialness, if anything, you go against it.
I just wanna, I just wanna put it out there, because I will either, uh, recuse myself or just, you know.
Like, you know, recuse yourself.
What goes on?
Okay.
So, I don't hear any, so.
Yeah.
So, does somebody want to make a motion to, uh, put this slate of, of candidates on, to, for two-year terms on the, um, Dover, get it right, Water System Task Force?
I moved that we, um, moved with the selection of candidates brought to us for the, for a two-year term for the Water Task Force.
Dover with the Air Water System.
I mean, this is full Water System Task Force.
I'm second. Anything else?
Uh, question, question, so what is the structure of this gonna be? Are they gonna have public meetings that they need to announce, or is it a closed thing?
No, it, it's, it's, it's a committee we've appointed. They have to take minutes, and it's thirty, so anybody.
All right.
And, and under the new open meeting law, it also has to be taped, or in some way, either audio or video.
But I just didn't know why Sarah couldn't vote on herself to be in it, but that's okay.
I, I think it just makes it cleaner.
Yeah, I'm fine recusing.
If I was on it, I'd just vote myself in, so I wouldn't worry about it, but okay, I'm good with it.
All right, so, um, can I call this call for the vote now?
Yes, please.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, awesome, thank you, Patrick.
Thank you.
Next, we're gonna revisit the personnel policy that had que- were questions last, at the last meeting. And want to understand, Mike and Jeanette have gotten together and, uh, done some work on. It's the cleaning up some of the, you know, not completely clear information in the, in the personnel policy. So which one of you wants, Jeanette?
I'm the first.
Okay.
Thank you, Michael. Uh, yeah, so I sent you now, uh, Mike and I discussed, actually, I sent you, um, what the LCT were getting on as well. And they were pretty much in agreement with what we were thinking. And so we just made, um, just tweaked a few words, basically. Um, as far as the benefits, um, for all employees and uh, for the part of time, it's eligible.
And then you sent it all forward today. Another clarification, which I do appreciate, is that on, on ad, on average versus what it used to say, um.
On a regular basis.
On a regular basis, and average seems like a more.
Yes.
Quantifiable.
Yeah, it, it's a better, um, way to, to do that. So you, have you incorporated these as well into the revised personnel, this is on average, into the revised personnel policy?
Yes.
Does anybody have any questions about the revised personnel policy? Hearing none? Does somebody want to make a motion that we approve, approve the revised personnel policy, and we'll have it dated today?
I make a motion that we approve the revisions to the personnel policy, uh, effective with today's date.
Second.
Any questions from anybody? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, uh, that's that, on that. Okay. Now we are gonna have, hear from Linda, the ass- town assessor about the update on, on the era and omission for GC zero zero five, Pamela Dudley. Yes, please.
Okay. So this is just going back to what we talked about last month. The the value was the same, it was just how it was really allocated, as far as homestead versus non-homestead. Uh, homestead ninety-four, five forty, non-homestead thirty-two, seven hundred. And then that brings you down to the explanation of the non-homestead value. I had to take the full value of the garage. And then the value for the business use of the dwelling was eighteen-five fifty. Which, you know, add up to the one twenty-seven to forty.
Okay, so.
We just discovered a three hundred dollar discrepancy last time, and that's probably why I had a headache, because I've been racking my brain and looking through these to figure out where the, that amount came up, because usually when you have contiguous parcels not combined, you're most likely those values are gonna come up a little higher. Once they're combined, the way it, the system works, people sometimes get a little bit of a break. So, with that being said, the only thing I could come up with was when they were combined, I had, it breaks it down to the house site value, two acres, okay? Then the next ten, and then anything after that is usually valued at rural resident, rural undeveloped. So.
So, so I, 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 so this new, the new value for both combined parcels is one seventy-six, two hundred. Is that what, I don't, I didn't add this up today, my, my bad, you know, I.
Uh, no, the one se- no, no.
One seventy-six, two hundred is the one that you said that gave us last meeting.
That was the last time of the, when the parcels were.
Combined, yes.
And.
And they're still combined.
No, they're not.
Now you've separated.
I separated.
I thought by law they had to be sep- combined.
You're right, they're supposed to be. And, uh, for this particular one, I took it and just made a decision to separate it, because it was just too.
Compensating?
Well, too confusing, but also for the property owner to make somebody's mortgage payment increase because of a piece of land that was not mortgaged, if that makes sense, right, so.
Well, and, and would that be an issue if, say something happened and there was some problem with the mortgage and, that, could they, could they go after the whole combined unit? Or, or just, just, just where the house and that particular parcel is?
Because I, I think that they could go after that full amount, and, uh, so I. Yeah.
Is there a ramification to what happens? Well, some, I mean, we're gonna go through an appraisal, so that's gonna, it's gonna be quite, this whole thing is gonna come probably back again.
Right, and it, and she's, I've given her suggestions on how to handle this. I've also had a conversation with Laura Sebelia about contiguous parcels. Um, but, so this will change this year, again, for two thousand and twenty-five tax year. And it'll be fine. Um, and if there's ramifications, I'll nip to it. I don't, I will say what I did, and I think what I did was reasonable, and if I, if it came up again with somebody else, then yes, I mean, this is setting precedent, I understand. But if.
Didn't they just acquire the Brickyard, or how, how come, how come this, they were two parcels?
They bought the Brickyard shortly after the Booth City, and I believe the Brickyard, I think it's I think, and it's like, you know, right over, right onto Booth City parcel. Um. Probably one of the lowest values in town, and the most complicated, right? Uh, so, does that make sense? And again, it really didn't, to really come before you, because there wasn't technically a value change, but theoretically there was, because I activated the Brickyard parcel. Um. And I do think that three hundred dollars, we would find it if we dug into the, uh, residential excess acreage. Because when I separated them, I, the Brickyard parcel isn't at residential excess, it's at the rural undeveloped. So that's where that.
So, my only concern is, how many other properties are there like this that have been combined when, you know, when people maybe not wanted them to be combined, um, and that fall under the same problem, because they have a mortgage or, or that, with taxes being escrowed. I just want to treat everybody equally.
Exactly.
And it kind of, and I understand, it, it, what you say does make sense.
Mm-hmm.
But I, I'm guessing there's others that may be in the same situation.
So this year, I sent out two change of appraisal letters to two, uh, property owners. One came in literally yelling at me, I would say that, um, that they were separated by a certain lister. And I said I understood, but that, at that time, that was not supposed to have happened, and it did. So, and I gave her the same, I told anyone else that I'm, you know, trying to tighten things up in preparation for the reappraisal, and she flew out to go, but then, a month later, I did get a transfer, that they transferred that other parcel into a trust or something, so that took care of it.
Okay.
So, um, and then with this one, uh, was also unfortunate because of Rusty Passing, kind of, you know, uh, before April first, but I didn't get a dust certificate, you know, so there's a lot of. But like I said, if somebody else came in, I, with this kind of a situation, you know, where it really uh, would have an issue with their mortgage and escrow, I would probably do this, I would do the same thing, so, um, I'm not treating anyone any differently. Um.
Joe? Questions? But, so you said it will change again, so are they gonna be recombined, or what? Is just the appraisal?
No, she's, she's gonna take, uh, put the Brickyard parcel in it, in her son's name, give it to her son.
Right, will take care of the problem. So, okay. Other questions about it?
Just unclear. So, if someone else is in the same situation, you would change the property. Same. Do the same thing to save the money, correct?
To save what? I didn't hear that last part.
So you say this particular parcel you're changing to do whatever.
Right.
But is there other properties that are like this out there?
I'm sure there are other properties, they have not been, aside from the other one I just mentioned. Nobody has come to me and said, this really messed up my mortgage. Um.
Is there any way that you can do a report to see how many other ones are out there? Is that just not a possibility?
I, uh, well, I wouldn't know if they had a mortgage on or they're not. It's true, yeah.
Okay, so, so, so people's due diligence on this one, that they have to know what's up to, on the mortgage or whatever.
Right.
I, I, as Vicky and I said before, before other things, I just don't want it to become another lister issue. That's why I want it to be fair and equitable for all our taxpayers, please. So if there's some way you can do some sort of research and reach out to those other ones, so that everyone is aware, that would be awesome. Thank you.
Stop.
Well, the, and are they, because they're not, right, they're, they're not actually saving on taxes, right?
You know, it, sometimes when the parcels are combined, they might get a little bit.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I think I've got, so it's actually like a net. It's helping them, but it's also consequently, even if it's very insignificant, but it's not like, there's no dollars coming out of our pocket for this. If anything, there's in that game of three hundred dollars, I thought.
No, no, it's, it's a, it's a loss of three hundred, it's a loss.
Yeah.
That's why, this is kind of an anomaly that it went up.
Right.
When they were combined, so.
Yeah.
It's pretty weird, but, uh.
Gotcha. So usually, if you separated them, we would be, we would be that game.
Right.
Because you're.
Okay, so then. And, and they're gonna be, those are gonna be separated.
So typically, it would be, uh, they're gonna have to pay more in tax, but it might help them with their mortgage or something.
Gotcha.
Yep.
Okay. And there's no mortgage on that other land, I mean, if this, you can't get, and so, it, I, I, I get it. All right, well, th- this is a unique situation, and, uh, I just, I hope you keep good notes on what happened here, because I think it's really important to, you know, somebody might see this and say, hey, wait, mine did the same thing, and, uh, we, we just need to be, as Joe just said, fair to everybody, and I know there's a lot of, lot of moving pieces in this one about what happened, but, um, yes.
I agree.
So you don't need anything from us, but, um, thank you for coming in and discussing it with us, because it is unique.
And then just the follow-up on Edie Moss, who was, she was on Zoom last time. Uh, the current use file went back to the state, I put a note, and I haven't received anything back, so.
You sent us a little note on that.
I did?
Yeah, you sent.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Yep.
All right.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Thank you. All right. Of the words.
Thank you. And don't forget October first.
Nope.
Very important.
Nope. No, we're not gonna forget about it. Eric? Deckard contract.
We have two options. We either sign or we don't sign. Um, you know, like I said last time, we're looking at about a month of, uh, discoveries for properties, and then another two weeks to a month of discovery, two weeks to a month for uh, implementation and registration set up. So.
So we're at day twenty-eight right now. Uh, and day forty-four, which is the last day that, uh, I recall can happen, is October fifth, now, four. Well, how do people think? I mean, if it's, for, anyway, if there's a recall, and there's a vote, and it goes down, we're out the eighteen thousand and change.
We're paying eighteen thousand, is it company or not?
No, the eighteen thousand is to begin.
Get them going.
It's to begin, like, the, the entire contract is for thirty-nine. All of the math in terms of registration fees and things was based on that total, based on a number of short-term rentals that are in Dover at the moment. Um.
So I, I, I still think that it, it's a lot of money to, to potentially hope, and I, I.
Somebody that'll come up.
Keep our fingers crossed over. But again, they have to get five percent of the voters' signatures on it.
Mm-hmm.
To have a recall, but if we put money, I, I, I just don't wanna, I don't.
If you tell anyone it's smart about, it's not gonna bring it in till the end.
Okay.
So.
All right.
So thought then, can we discuss it on the first, and, and make me signing contingent on waiting till the fourth?
If we put that on the agenda?
I just wanna get this straight, so we're sending thirty-nine thousand dollars altogether, how do we get any of that back?
We get, yes, we do get the money back. We, we are paying Deckard upfront for the system, and as people pay their dues, we get that money back.
We get the money.
It's, it's, it's a net zero.
Okay.
Um.
Okay, we, we say we're out of, I, I, I thought that the money.
No, what Vicky was saying is that.
It's a business deal.
Right.
If, if for any reason that the ordinance was overturned. If if for any reason that the ordinance was overturned, we get zero back, so.
So. As much as I I would love to. Say yes, I'm still with the way Vicky is thinking, because I just do not want something to happen and we go into a year. Of whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then that the data is useless to us, because it's gonna have to be all done again.
Right, or we have to go through the whole ordinance process again.
Right, so the the thought here though, just so everybody's on the same page, and and I'm completely in agreement with you, I don't want to spend money. That we might just lose altogether, but we will have to be more flexible going through the fall and into the. Holiday seasons about, you know, deadlines of registrations and things like that.
It pushes things off for sure.
I mean, we're we're talking about getting into the season like.
Right.
We're going to have to be flexible this first year.
Yes, so we still cannot recoup, hundred percent.
We will. We will. They they under. They underpriced for the number that we're typically seeing, so we should be fine.
All there's no money.
We have to do something, man.
I get we have to do something, we've talked, I get it. I get it.
Anybody else have any other feelings about this? Opposite feelings?
I got a lot of feelings, I'm not going to talk.
Well, unusually, Joe and I agree on something, so. Yeah, I think I remember one about ten hours ago, I don't. So I I would like it, I would like it warned on for the first that we would, uh, accept the agreement. Uh, once the forty four days is not. And you can sign. Okay, next.
Uh, Travis, myself, Mr. Garber, and and Mike, excuse me, I don't remember the name of your groomer. Uh, but the four of us took a walk down the vast trail on Horse Hill. Um, talking about improvements that could be made to the trail to allow the groomer to come down through. Um, ultimately. You know, by the time we got down to the bottom, Travis and I were completely commenable to all the things they're looking to do to the trail. Um, the only work they asked of us was just to have Brooke move. Two signs back from the trail a little bit, just because they don't want to flip it with their groomer. Take those out, which is much appreciated. Um, but, you know, no major alterations to the trail, uh, you know, Travis requested minimal digging. Uh, there was one spot where Travis is going to provide some material to make one of the turns easier for them, and there were two. Small trees that would be coming down to make an adjustment, um, to avoid cutting for larger trees. So I just wanted to let you guys know or or get. I guess, I guess we're looking for permission from you guys to let them do that work on the vast trail in Horse Hill. They're renting the machine, they're doing the work.
So, everyone is in agreement.
Yeah.
So it sounds like we're playing very nice in our sandbox up there, let's go forward and. I think it's great that we're doing it, I think it's good that we're doing a little bit of work and helping out the vast, some material and, uh. Unless Mike Garber's got some sort of comment that he needs to put in, I haven't heard anything.
Nope, just thank you, everybody.
Anybody else have any comments? Great, sounds wonderful.
Thank you.
No, it seems there's not a success.
Any idea if we're going to have a ribbon cutting?
Yes, we are, I'm I'm.
I know, I know. I know, but it's it's going to be winter.
I understand, the the signage has been the major holdup there in the States, uh, I'm just trying to get an answer from them on what I can have.
Is this for the Frisbee golf stuff? So is there like a moving contract that says like, you didn't show everybody?
Uh, there was no.
So you gotta speak up, because we're being recorded.
Oh, sorry, is there any way we can get money back from the Frisbee company for this delay that is unreasonable?
There was no deadline, and some of the delays last spring were our permitting issues, so.
They just threw it back at us.
Well.
So hopefully they're in the United States now, so that's a good thing, and so hopefully.
I want to do it just as much as anybody else, anecdotally, uh, a ton of positive feedback on the property, we're seeing. Astronomical numbers, especially on the weekends, we're seeing great numbers even during the week. Um, and there was a lovely, there's been a few lovely letters to the editor in the Litterfield, all I knew is about the property. Um, it's it's doing what we expected it to do and and with more marketing once it's, you know, it's it's going to be. Uh, great, great.
We were up there last Thursday, I think, and there was a whole van with five mountain bikes. It's, and these guys, they were in there, they were just grinding it over and over and over again, and they were, they were from like Connecticut. So the word is out too. So it's good, it's good stuff, thank you, next, we're going to move on to the signage program application, where I love art space.
So we did receive a signage application from I Love Art Space, um, typically our own nonprofit. I mean, we review all the applications, but, uh, nonprofits are. Reviewed on a case by case basis, Shannon and I have reviewed this and find it to be. Uh, within, you know, definitely within the spirit of the signage program, I would like to see the signs funded for the space.
And the signs are fifteen hundred thirty dollars, and so they're looking for seven sixty five. Uh, actually, I really like how this fits into that triangle, it's very nice, everybody take a look at this. Goes in, yeah.
So you're.
And it's a nonprofit, but the artists are for profit, so it's kind of a hybrid thing.
Yes, and you were, sorry.
Do we have, we know what color, is it going to be rubber green or is it going to be?
It was black, anyway.
It's just, it is going to be black.
Same, it's what's already on.
Oh, like Janine's, so it's, so it's not gonna. It's gonna be just like it shows, this is, this is a color version.
And it's it's not a town sign, so.
No, I wasn't suggesting that they had to, I just thought it would be lovely, but.
No, I think that's, I, well, and Janine's would look odd.
Yes, true.
Okay, you have your hand up here?
Yes.
Okay.
So you are approving pending.
The sign for permits.
Did you have an update on that?
I do.
Okay.
Um, Tabby was going to be on Zoom tonight, but she's not feeling well, so. She did, um, let me know that she was approving the sign, because we just don't have a copy of it yet.
So once the sign permit is received in the town. Somebody has somebody, once it's finished. It's in, so does somebody want to make a motion that we spend seven hundred sixty five dollars? As the matching, as the fifty percent on the signs for I Love Art Space.
For giving, but I don't remember, did we already waive the fee for the application for this?
We not, no, you're not wa-
It's not a town sign.
It's not a town sign.
Profit, that's what I was thinking.
That'd be very lovely, but they already paid.
Uh, I make a motion that we approve the, uh. Sign application for a total of seven hundred sixty five dollars grant. Against a total project cost of one thousand five hundred thirty dollars for the I Love Art Space.
Okay. Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, Eric, anything else? Thank you. You need to go into the board of liquor control, make motion to go to the board of liquor control. Second? Second by Scott. Uh, we have special events permits for the Wine and Harvest Festival, which is on Saturday, September twenty first. For North Branch Vineyards LLC and Vermont Hard Cider Company LLC.
I make a motion that we approve your special event permits for North Branch Vineyards LLC and Vermont Hard Cider, Hard Seltzer Company LLC. For the Wine Harvest Festival this weekend.
Any, and okay, second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Joe?
That's, should we come out of the board of liquor control?
Second, all in favor? We have the consent agenda, we have minutes for Sep- from September third and September tenth.
Who wasn't here?
Okay.
So make emotionally proof the minutes of September third.
Second.
Yeah, and, uh, Scott wasn't there either. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, but you weren't there.
Oh, the time was just the third.
She said the third, okay.
Does everybody here for the third?
Yeah, yes, Joe was here.
And I make emotionally approve the minutes of September ten?
All right.
No, just second it, Joe.
Second, I'm just looking to the trash bill, sorry.
Okay, so, um. Joe seconded it?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm staying, I'm staying, Scott and.
Three oh two.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve the warrants on September fourteenth, twenty twenty four for one hundred sixty thousand, six hundred forty two dollars and eight cents.
Okay. Any questions about the warrants?
I have a lot of questions, bro.
Like what?
This is all the crash thing, how they doing?
Well, that's how they been doing it. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
We have FYI, the special meeting on the reappraisal process, October first, six o'clock start. And that's a, that's also a select board meeting, so we have to have a forum at the Dover Town Hall on the con. Town Fair, October second in Killington, I know Sarah's going. Uh, anybody else? Trails and Rec Committee meeting, October eighth at six thirty. And Snow Lake Dam Project meeting, November eighteenth, six P M on, at the Town Hall.
Just make sure everyone pencils that in.
I already have.
I'll pencil it. It's changed, got it so many times.
This one's going to stick, I think. Okay, and any liaison reports? None. Uh, and then we need executive session for personnel and legal managers with the police chief, Mike Arbor guest. So I'd love, thank everybody, sorry Bobby, didn't last longer, now you gotta go home.
Free run, thanks for calling Bobby. Bobby, here's like our old thing.
Well, we had Garber. Yes.
Thanks, Bobby.
Yes, yeah, yeah, I responded to him and Jeanette responded.
Yeah, I think he'll be there at the first.
Yeah.
So I just thought it was nice that he commanded the website and.
Well, that that story in the reformer was, or, yeah, Saturday's reformer, it was, it was awful.
It was upsetting.
It really was, the putty went through such crap, and and so so many people were shocked about how much their taxes were.
Yeah.